I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, Ron's gone today, so. Here are all the motions.
I am.
Next is, we have the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda for today.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next are the approval of the minutes.
And I will move to approve the minutes from last week's meeting.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is approval of claims for payment.
I will make a motion to approve the claims for payment for this week.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I got thirty seconds. Public hearings, purpose of a public hearing is when we open a public hearing is so that anybody that wants to speak during that time before motions can come in and say what they want. Come on in Kurt. And. Just trying to get it out there ahead of time that this is a time to speak. If you don't speak during the public hearing then it's, then we'll close it and then time's up. And now it is ten oh two and I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the road vacation of Pine Lake. Road number 230th Street. Does anybody have anything to say on that? Has there been any written or oral? Just the one with, that's in the resolution on the alliance energy that's been put at the bottom of it. Gives them the reserves of easement. Here there. And this is just closing the road off, just shortening the road, yeah, on the property on both sides of the road. And we talked about, about a year ago and we're getting around to finally closing it for you.
Fast tracking it, right?
Yeah. You left yourself room to turn around when you clean the roads, right?
Oh yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And from there I can ask for a resolution for road vacation of the Pine Lake.
I will move to approve the resolution for the road vacation at Pine Lake camps on 230th Street.
I'll go ahead and second that. Any discussion? I brought up the fact where the easement was put into there and.
It, the utility still has easement there, right Joe? Do you want to?
Yes, Greg.
Okay.
According to the IM, it refers back to the IO code that any utilities that are in there right now, they have easement to go maintain those. And basically they're not giving up any rights when we vacate it, so.
Yeah, I think they knew that, but they just wanted to make sure it was spelled out as well.
Yeah.
When I was talking to them. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Renée.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I have another. Public hearing at ten ten, so I'm gonna jump down and. For crisis intervention, Jody was supposed to be here, but she's not. I'll turn over leave.
I'm Danielle Bell with Crisis Intervention Service and we've had some staff changes, so I wanted to come and introduce Kristen to everyone. She's an emotional assault advocate. You can tell them a little bit about yourself if you'd like.
I, I grew up in Iowa and I moved away for like nine years, Connecticut, Colorado, just moved back to the area and started at Crisis Intervention Service two months ago. I'm an emotional assault advocate, prevention specialist, so. Good to be back.
As far as what we've been up to, we've got a new swing set at our transitional housing property. We've made a lot of kind of improvements out there. I know in the past we've had complaints from neighbors, so. It's very well landscaped at this point. Everybody's doing a really good job of keeping their stuff picked up. We've been working pretty closely with law enforcement to make sure we're keeping trouble to a minimum at that. Location. We've got lots of groups running. We're doing the healing hour right now, which is being offered in Grundy County and Hardin County on every other Wednesday. So we had it last Wednesday and it'll be next Wednesday. Very just holistic group intended for victims of trauma, not necessarily domestic violence or sexual assault, but just any trauma. I'm running a group at Quakertale. This is my second group at Quakertale. This one's focusing on financial literacy. I did save dates out there. I did save dates at BCLW for all the seventh and eighth graders. We worked on a group, a couple presentations at South Hardin and we have an ongoing relationship with the state training school. We do a group there. Every time they have a parenting class, we go in and we do a five-session program with boys at the state training school. I think we have about, I would say somewhere in the ballpark of twenty to twenty-five active Hardin County clients right now, so we've been really busy, but other than that, things are going pretty good.
Oh, welcome.
Yeah, welcome back to Iowa.
Welcome back to Hardin County. Anything else? Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Next, I got Kurt here. Kurt, you're sweating over there. I know it's warm down here.
COPD.
I'll, I'll go ahead and get you going right, I'll go ahead and get you going right away on this.
Okay. I don't need a stand, do I?
Nope.
Just two things right now. This road situation I live on, everybody that's anybody been down there knows that the road in the widest spot is twenty-two feet and that's a very small spot. It's normally twenty feet wide, which isn't normal gravel road. You guys were nice enough to put up thirty-five mile an hour speed limit signs. The problem is nobody sees them. The first one's conglomerated in with the park signs up right as you turn the corner. And even my friends who come down on a regular basis, they said, where's the sign? I said, it's up there. It's kind of tall up in the air, but it's right past all the park signs. So they're not even seeing that sign. The secondary one's going down the hill and it's up high enough that, well, I suppose high-profile vehicles like my pickup truck, I can see it. But these people in cars, they're not seeing it. The sign has been set up on the top side of the ditch and the sign is too far up in the air, so I went and put. Black and yellow tape down the post and three different colored reflectors on it, just to make it more evident, you know, hey, there's something here. And they still don't see it. So I don't know what to do. I'm not sure if thirty-five mile an hour though is, is an adequate speed for that road to begin with. You know, it's hard for me to tell how fast somebody's going by, but three weekends ago, I have a friend that comes help me on Saturday and we sit in my front yard to take breaks. And thank God he had his back to the road. Some young girl in a small car came down the road and I know she wasn't doing thirty-five, but she clipped a rock off the side of her tire. And it flew up and hit him in the back of the head. Didn't cause laceration for stitches, but it put a good knot on his head. And I think if he'd been turned around the other way, it would have put his eye out. And there's nothing I could do about it. I mean, you know, she didn't mean to do it, but she was doing a little fast, but still, I can't tell how fast she was going. I don't have a radar gun or anything. I just thought it might be, if, if it's not too much problem, to change that, the first sign, a little bit farther down the road, so it's more evident that it's a sign by itself and not a canoe, you know, exit or whatever the other signs that say up there. Also, somebody tore off the park close sign that Wes had put up for me up there. Cause you know, during the season, if they put up, it was a flop sign, if I remember right, a half sign that was folded shut, right? You know, somebody knocked it off the post and it was kind of handy. I mean, not everybody pays attention to it, but half of the people that in the wintertime aren't driving down there just out of curiosity because the park is closed. That needs to be replaced. I'm not sure if he's supposed to do that or if the engineer's office is. But I thought it would be nice too if they, if they'd lower that to thirty mile an hour that way. They have, you know, I think the, the police give them a five mile an hour. Kind of buffer in there. You know, you can be doing thirty-five, but if you go over that, you're speeding. Cause even some of the, even some of the deputies that come down there don't drive thirty-five mile an hour. Anyway, no, that, that was just one of my concerns. I don't know if you could put a sign up basically, you know, hey, reduce speed, road narrows, because right at my driveway, it narrows down to ten feet. And you can see it from the top of the hill, but obviously some drivers don't see that. The ones with big campers are the ones that have problems because they try to maneuver down that ten-foot strip with two big pull behinds and usually one. We about had one tip over in the ditch the other day, but thank God he was on the north side and not my side. My ditch on my side's a lot deeper. But it, it's just a concern of mine. Second thing is, is this walking trail that the Green Belt Trust put in. I don't know, is anybody a member of the Green Belt Trust in here?
Not a member. I'm trying to think if, is it the Green Belt Trust that put that in?
They, they handled all the logistics of it and they turned it over to us.
So it's conservation style?
Now it is, yes.
Okay, well, it's a, I'm not sure. It's a personal problem of mine. I'm the only one that lives anywhere near or on that trail.
Yeah, the trail goes behind your place, connects to two parks.
Fifteen foot from my bedroom window and about twenty feet from my back, or my front door of that small house up front. There's no signs have been posted at either end of it, and I'm not sure who would be responsible for that, but we have an active shooting range down there at my place, about a. From the bottom corner of my property, it's probably a hundred and twenty yards from the bottom corner of my property where they turn, kind of turn a corner and they put a bench down there on that corner. And at the top of the trail where it kind of comes to the end of my woods, it's less than seventy-five yards from that shooting range. And bullets don't stray that often, but they do stray. And I don't know if, whose responsibility would that be to notify the public? That that's an active hunting area and it's got an active live shooting range down there? I, I don't know. I was gonna have signs made up myself by Seaton Sign Company, but they were gonna be like a hundred and fifty dollars per sign. I can't afford that. I've already put up those signs of, on the edge of the road when I had the kids still at home. I had those big orange signs made. I don't know if you ever saw them. But basically slow down. I got children and animal playing. But those were quite expensive in themselves. But I just thought it would be nice if they posted signs, especially hours on that trail. I'm not sure, you know, why anybody would want to walk that in the dark, but in the dark would probably not be a good time to be walking back through there. We've got a coon hunter that comes down through there to keep the coons down in population and they're, they're out of control. They break into the houses all the time. They tear, they're quite destructive little animals if they want to be. So I have him come down year round and just kind of keep the population of the coons thinned out. Granted, most time that he's ever shooting is with a twenty-two, which is his old caliber rifle, and they're usually shooting them out of a tree because the dogs will tree them, so they're shooting straight up. But I still don't think it would be a good idea for anybody to be on that trail after dark. Whether, I don't know if they have a sign at the other end of it down at Daisy Lawn.
I couldn't do it, Wes.
All the parks that are not campground, they close it. They're usually posted, it says park closes at ten thirty PM.
Okay. Well, I didn't know about that trail thing or not.
Well, I can put some there too as well, but most of the parks have those signs on it. Even the one at Bates Park has got that on it. Ten thirty, there should be no, no out traffic.
We're, we're not used to that trail either. We were sitting out there Memorial Day weekend and me and my girlfriend, we were sitting there talking. All of a sudden. Here's a guy and two kids standing less than twenty feet away from us on the other side of the fence. That kind of surprised me, you know, they, they're the first people I've seen use the trail at all. I don't like the invasion of privacy either, but Doc Bates's idea, when he was still alive, I contacted him, you know, why are you putting a fence between the trail and the field? And he told me directly out, he says, well, we can't have them wandering out in the field. And my statement was to him, well, Doc, what makes you think I want them wandering through my woods and my back property? I've got a three-strand barbed wire there that's not real adequate. It, it. It might keep a cow out maybe where it's not torn down or busted, but it's not adequate at all. I guess I could. Confront somebody about a new fence or something in that area. I'm not sure how we'd drop it off at the south end because you got the river right down at the south end of my property. And it's hard to put a fence anywhere near water like that. But I would like to, I've got no trespassing signs, more of them where I'm gonna post up and down that whole area. Now, we have people wandering back in there even without the trail. They come in from the south end, they run their quad runners right up the old dried up ox boat. And I've even caught them crossing the river there and coming over on my sandbar and they, they're tearing up with their four-wheelers, which I don't mind sometimes, but I want to know when they're down there. So I've just asked them, you know, call me and let me know when you're coming, so I know that you're down in there. But I'm gonna do everything I can to try to keep the public out of my wooded area, but I would appreciate any kind of help I can get. I'm not sure how the law reads as far as we putting up a fence. Someone told me at one time, and I'm not sure if it was just something off the top of their head, they said. If you put a fence in, responsibility becomes fifty percent on one owner's side and fifty percent of the other owner's side.
That's a handshake agreement?
I'm not sure how, I've been, I've got a lawyer in Marshalltown that's looking into it.
Yeah, there's so many different ways if it's, if it's been, if it's in the abstract, it describes exactly what fence is yours, what isn't. You got the handshake rule, which is the right-hand rule. You meet in the middle, you shake hands and go to your right. I can't define what it is. Wes, do you recall off the top of your head?
I just know the right-hand rule, but I, you know, that's what I've always used.
It differs with acreages too, isn't it? And acreages responsible for all their own?
Could be, depends on the abstract. I mean, everyone can be different. I don't, I don't know what it is if there's nothing in your abstract on the property explaining that.
I'll have to have Doug look into that too. I got a lawyer in Marshalltown. He's trying to help me out, but you know, he's quite busy in his own work. And putting up a fence really isn't one of the things that we wanted to do either, because that cause, kind of restricts the wildlife from being able to cross freely through that area. But now with the five-strand barbed wire on the other side, you know, that kind of restrictive too. Matter of fact, we've, we've seen deer in between the fences. They kind of like that. I think they feel protected. But, no, those are just my two concerns. I don't know what we can do about them, but I'd sure appreciate any help.
The one was the speed limit sign. I think you're restricted by DOT as to where that sign can be, correct?
We're restricted by the, yeah, the MUTCD manual.
So I, I don't know.
Height regulation and all that?
They tell you, anything and everything. We have to follow that by code. That ten-foot where it comes to your driveway, I'm not familiar with that. Are you guys? Where the road narrows by the driveway?
I don't remember where the road goes down to ten foot.
Okay.
Right at my driveway. If you can see it from the top of the hill, it just.
You and Wes?
No.
Not, not down to ten foot.
Okay, well.
Have to look at it again.
We can sure go out and look at it. Is that a problem when you're out there in that area?
Well, I even try to mow a little bit on the north side of the road when I mow down this, my side. And I can't get too far out there. I'll plop the mower in the ditch. But if I can usually mow just enough that they can see where their tires, you know, like, like I said, with two campers moving in that area, I kind of give them an idea about how far they can go without flopping over into the ditch.
Okay. The speed limits, obviously you gotta have an officer there to catch them speeding and we, we can't set somebody there the whole time.
Oh, I know that.
Wait, what else? Am I missing one of the things?
I'll address the trail signs. I'll get some signs put on the trail.
Thank you.
To be closed at ten thirty, you know.
Am I missing anything? Did I forget anything?
I don't think so. It says flooding on the agenda. Is there flooding?
Oh, you said something about flooding issues too?
Nothing's been done with that. My first time I came in, about that water trough that they dug through the dike so they could put the three culverts through. When the river comes up, it comes back through that hole, back the opposite direction. Nothing's been done about it, but. Which one was it? I think it was the last emergency coordinator, not Roxanne, the guy.
Doug.
Doug Riggs.
Yeah, I think he was one that told me, he said, I think you could probably work up a temporary fix where you could sandbag. That trough, you know, if the river was coming up, just sandbag that trough to keep the water from coming back through. It's not, it's not really huge, but it's gonna take, it'd take a fair amount of sandbags. Well, when I looked into it. I called the fire chief, what is it, Wilson down there in Union?
Yep.
And he said, well, we got sands and we got sandbags, but we got no volunteers to help you with them. And I'm like, okay, fine. The COPD keeps me from doing anything. And just walking up to the building was workout. So that's not an option. I might be able to, on a weekend if it happened, to get a couple of my friends down there to help me sandbag that trough. But I'm not sure, what can I do? Who can I call on for help with that?
I'm not sure. Off the top of my head. We can check with Roxanne again, see if she has anybody. Like you said, you already called the fire station.
Yeah.
They're your volunteers.
So they're sandbagging culverts to keep the water from coming?
No, it's a water, it's a trough they dug through a dike, a natural dike, to put three culverts under the road to drain the ditches, went off that access road to the park.
But if you sandbag it, you're gonna take all the water, then it's gonna eventually go over the top too. What you're trying to do is keep the river, the flow of the river coming back through the culvert.
Yeah, we can handle the water coming down the hill, believe me. I've been there long enough to watch it. The only time that that north ditch has ever got water in it or gets full is when the spring flood comes. And then of course the trough, it works right that way, you know, because the river hasn't got up to that point. It's starting to flood, but then the water will shoot through that cement culvert usually, not the two smaller ones. But no water, even in ninety-three, no water flowed down my side. So that one underneath my road, that's the worst one. It goes underneath my secondary driveway down there at the bottom. That's the worst one because it's straight in line with that water trough. So when the water starts coming up, it just shoots right through it and it's kind of a sad thing to watch, as it'll fill up my backyard so fast and. The boat ramp at the park kind of has something to do with that too, we found out. We watched it, well, what we call a wall of water. I'm not sure if they let a gate out up at the dam in Iowa Falls, but it actually. It's, it's a taller form of water than what's normally flowing. You can see it like a wave coming down the river and right straight, not straight across from the boat ramp, but. Fifteen, twenty yards just up from it, right across from the sandbar, there's a dog lake in the river. I mean, it's a natural thing that it, the water hits over there on the other side of the river, but it comes. Off that niche and shoots straight across the river, comes up that boat ramp and it's flowing so fast, it shoots across the park driveway, starts filling up on the north side or the, that would be the east side of that drive. Starts filling up the field and then there's a saddleback in the road, just, well, probably twenty, thirty feet from my lower driveway. And that saddleback allows it to pour into my backyard too. So I've got it shooting through the culvert. I got it coming across the road from the other way. It's kind of depressing having your backyard fill up with water, especially after you've just planted your garden or something like that, which that did two years ago. It flooded my garden out for me. This year I wasn't even gonna try to plant a garden.
It didn't rain.
Is your property located in the flood plain?
Yes. And seventy-two was the worst flood they, that, oh, Paul Roan had been down there most of his life and he came down and told me, and seventy-two was the worst year they ever had for flood down there. And the water was three feet from my west wall at that little house. And I've never seen the water up that high. So obviously seventy-two, I think that was the same flood that took out the swinging bridge that the Boy Scouts put in, in that park. I'm not sure. But they, they lost that swinging bridge across the river in one of those floods back then.
Yeah, our problem is we can't control nature and the water.
Oh, I know.
And we aren't even able to. You got the Army Corps of Engineers, you got NRCS. It's way above the county level on that level. I, I don't know how to address it. I know we sent Roxanne down there a few times. Trying to help you out. I, I don't know what we can do at this time. I mean, we can keep, we can keep looking into it, but I don't know what we're looking into anymore. We've already found everything we could.
I remember you said something about putting in a, some kind of a purge culvert in that trough last time that allows water to go one way and not back the other. But that's probably a costly thing to get done and I know nothing's been done about it, but. I'm not sure if that would even solve the problem.
Probably not the way you're talking.
Not with that boat ramp problem. You'd have to raise that saddleback in the road to begin with and still where the, where's the water gonna go? You know, it's out, it's filling up the field.
Right. Oh, we can keep her, we can keep looking for ideas, but I know we're running out of them.
I'm just trying to live down there. I won't be there too much longer with the COPDs. But I appreciate any help you can give.
Okay. And I think Wes is addressing some of the issues on the signage and.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks Kurt. That was it. I'm gonna go back to our ten ten public hearing. I'm a little late, but that's all right. On the Animal Feeding and Operation Construction Permit with Mike Van Hove, finisher site, section twenty-seven. And what they're doing here. Is just adding an extra building to the existing site, which will increase twelve hundred pigs. Is there any public comments? Any written comments? Does anybody have anything to ask or add to it? Hearing nothing, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. She said no. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for the recommendation on the Animal Feeding and Operation Construction, Construction Permit.
I'll move to. Forward the recommend, or forward the. Permit onto the DNR. It meets all the requirements. That. That it needs to, so I'll, I'll move to move that on to the DNR. Approve it here and move to the DNR.
Okay. I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We've already done Jody. We've done Kurt and next we have a change of status in Conservation Department. And I have two.
Yep. Okay, I'll move to approve the hiring of the temporary seasonal, for temporary seasonal part-time help of Alexander Newkirk. At, out at Cockins for nine dollars an hour.
It's been, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then I'll make the motion to, for the temporary seasonal part-time help. Hiring of Michael Irwin. And he's as an intern at nine dollars an hour.
I'll second that. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have a change of status at the. Secondary roads.
Okay, I will move to approve the hiring of the temporary seasonal part-time help of Dayton Eugene Klaus. For mowing at twelve dollars an hour.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is I have applications for fireworks permit. I have two of these.
Okay. I'll move to approve the application from Thompson Family Annual Picnic. For the fireworks permit on. Where's the date?
Fourth.
Oh, all right. July fourth or Sunday, July fifth.
I will second that. Any discussion? I went through, you had yeses on everything. The only thing I would add to that is if we're in a burn ban, that obviously it's. Not gonna work. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I got one for Hard Cop.
What?
As you say, I got another one for Hard Cop.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and I'll make the motion for, to approve the application from the Hard Cop, Hard Cop Fogarty Family Celebration. On July eighteenth. And it looks like everything here is marked yes also, so.
I'll go ahead and second that and again, if we're in a burn ban, obviously can't have it then. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of secondary roads union contract.
I think.
Nancy has a copy and I know you just have a copy.
Yep, and I have the second copy. So, yeah, I will move to approve the agreement with the. Public professional and maintenance employees, local two thousand and three ID PAT.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permit secondary roads. No utility?
No utilities.
Anything secondary?
Reclaiming the shoulders right now and then spraying them with calcium chloride. So that's what you're seeing out there on the paved roads. It seems like we're pretty shorthanded. Right now. The things that we want to get done, we just don't have enough bodies to get it done.
Right.
We're gonna need to start spraying the guardrails and stuff. It's getting pretty late to do that. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is.
It's an issue.
It's an issue.
Vacation time or?
Yeah, you just have people gone, but then there's so many things that you need to do. If you have a bad spring like we did and we're hauling all that rock, we're getting, you're behind on the things that you need to do because you're doing all this other stuff, so.
Anything else? Then I'll go to the approved agreement with the Iowa DOT regarding construction associated with asphalt resurfacing projects on Highway sixty-five and fifty-seven.
This is, we've done this before with gravel road intersections. We have them paved back seven.